Okay, it is 8:30 and I'm going to call this special meeting of our school board to order. First of all, I want to welcome all of you that are here. I'm glad that each and every one is here. There's nothing better than hearing things firsthand and then you can help spread the information. So, we're glad to have you and you're welcome to come any other time as well. We like visitors, so... Okay, we have an agenda tonight that really has just two items on it. Public forum and seminary building. And so, as we normally do, we really try to follow Robert's Rules of Order. I'm going to entertain a motion from one of the board members to approve the consent agenda, which is just our agenda. So, would one of you want to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Also move.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion is approved. Alright, so our first order of business and as we move on is the public forum. And we have had one person, Mary Henke, has requested to speak. And as we always do in the public forum portion, we ask the people speaking to limit their comments to four minutes. And if we get towards the end of that time, because sometimes we lose track, our board secretary Helen will let us know that we're approaching that time. And so, Mary, I don't know if you want that table or, you know, we don't have a lectern for you, but we, if you, that'll school desk right there.
Oh, okay.
If you want to use that to address the board, that would work for us.
Why don't you just pick that up and move it up there?
Or move over here.
Yeah.
Can you go up here? Sure. I know that chair's beautiful. Once again, we welcome Mary to speak to our board.
I'm a little nervous, so I'm going to be reading this time fairly rapidly because it's four minutes. And so, my name is Mary Henke and I'm a local small animal veterinarian. I'm here as a concerned community citizen regarding an 1869 seminary building known as Old Central. I'm very humbled and happy there's a possibility of the last building of the campus being saved. Thanks for letting me speak on behalf of those interested in saving the seminary building. As I said on March 16th meeting, I am here in a spirit of collaboration, cooperation, and consensus. I read in the paper in February that seminary was in danger of being torn down. I wanted to get involved. I'm not an expert in the area of historic preservation. I've been on the Historic Committee, but I'm learning. I started a Facebook page, Save the Seminary, O-S-Age Isle, March 10th, to date, 634 likes and also petitioned four days ago. 332 signatures online and also 140 live signatures at least. Asking for more time to develop a purpose and plan. I'm willing to set up a funding page to raise money for restoration and ongoing upkeep. I've had one anonymous unsolicited citizen call me with $50,000. This building was put on the National Register of Historic Places in 1977, thanks to Mr. Biederman. It was put on for two categories, education and architecture. Reasons to keep it on the Historic Registry. It's on the National Park Service list. It draws people to our area. Eligible for historic tax credits and grants. I've talked to the State Preservation Office in Des Moines many times. There is a grant available this month for $40,000 to $100,000. Historic Resource Development Program as a start towards restoration. I have five pages of possible grants. There are also grants from Silos and Smoke Sacks. NIAAC has shown interest on a course on historic preservation of the building. Kirkwood has a curriculum they will share with NIAAC. Other possible organizations are the Mitchell County Economic Development Commission and the Mitchell County Finarc Council. On another note, the solidarity of the building. Gary Goyette and Rudy Christian examined the building and found it to be sound. Portland cement was not used in 1869. This building was built to last. This particular basement, as reported in October 2014, is sound. It is built to specifications to allow expansion and contraction without damage. I, as many others, would like to see the building stay where it is. If moved, the building could stay on the Registry of Historic Places. If the site is pre-approved, it would preferably face east. The main objective is to save the building. There is an emergency fund of $15,000 available for moving from Des Moines, which could help. Monray Windows of O-Sage specializes in historic restoration as a resource. They did, Baptist Church in O-Sage, by the way, thank you Baptist Church, which partnered with the town of O-Sage to start the seminary. The word "seminary" is not always a religious term, but it was an accredited high school and junior college. Monray recently did an old church in Boston where Paul Revere, oh, the British are coming! Quick history. Pulitzer Prize winner Hamlin Garland wrote over 40 books and mentioned the seminary in the Sun of the Middle Border. He started a literary society in Chicago called the Twixt Brothers and is still going today. Cliff growers, and I have been in contact with them. Julia Addington said to be the first woman ever elected to office in the United States was a superintendent of schools. Weston Noble was inspired by a concert at the seminary, second floor. He's the Luther College conductor. Wrestling practice until about 1952 and showering in the basement. My family of wrestling coaches had heroes, including Jared Lehman. I know he was the hero of many others. Legend says he joined the wrestling team to get a shower. They showered in the basement of the seminary building. There are other famous Mitchell County residents, including former governor of Nebraska and United States Secretary of Agriculture Mike Joeans, to name a few. What the building really needs is a purpose. What I have in mind is a spirit of cooperation to come together with a solution. Funny quote from a Lincoln student. She was looking at a picture of the campus from 1869, pointed at the seminary building, the only one that's left. If you tear it down, it's just gone. We only have a picture in a silver frame. We can't see any of it in person and that's going to be sad. We have support now. Let's go.
On January 14th, some people thought the problem was solved. I think you've done a very good job and I appreciate your comments. Thank you very much. Alright, thanks again, Mary. Okay, the second part of our meeting then is the topic of the seminary building. I'm going to do two things right now. I'm going to restate the motion that was passed on our March 16th meeting so that we're all very clear about that. And then I'm going to explain the procedure for the rest of this meeting so it also should be real clear for everybody. The motion that was made and passed unanimously at our March 16th meeting was to approve the destruction slash demolition of the seminary building and allow the superintendent to move forward with acquiring bids for demolition and to approve the donation of requested items from the seminary building to the Mitchell County Historical Society. Okay, continuing on, within the past week, a possible viable plan has been proposed with the three things that the board has felt are totally necessary for any plan. A purpose, funding, and a timeline. Those who have proposed this plan have been asked to share their proposal with the board. So, as such, we will proceed as follows. So, this will be our plan then for the rest of the meeting. I'm going to ask the group to present their plan and since they are presenting at the board's request for information, they will not be under a timeframe. This is not public forum. Second, after they've done this, the board will discuss and may ask questions of anybody that they choose to clarify information. Keep in mind, it is the board that will do the discussion. If they choose and need information, they will ask a specific individual and only that person may respond. So, we hope that you will respectfully consider that. After the board has discussed, I'm going to charge the board in the following way. The board will have two options. One, take no action. And that would allow the motion of March 16th to stand. Or move to rescind the March 16th motion. If the board, the motion is rescinded, I will then entertain a motion for a different course of action on the seminary building. You might have noticed the motion also included items requested by the Historical Society. We will handle that as a separate issue. So, our procedure, we're going to hear the proposal that includes purpose, funding, and a timeline. And then, the board will have their discussion and possibly asking for clarification or more information if they would wish. And when the board has finished their discussion, we'll either go with no motion, which means no action, or a motion to rescind the March 16th motion. And then we will move on from there. Okay, is that clear, board? Good. Okay, so, I will sit down now and I'm calling on Paul Demrow. I believe he's going to be the spokesperson for this proposal. So, Paul, welcome. We're glad to have you here.
I'm pretty glad to be here. I know a lot of you folks, maybe most of you folks, but for the people that don't know me, I'm an O-Sage native, 1979 graduate of O-Sage High School, proud alumni of O-Sage. I'm an attorney in Cedar Falls, Iowa. I live by New Hartford, Iowa, about an hour straight south of here. I had a lot to do with O-Sage over the years. Was involved in the inception of the Ed Foundation back when it started. Just been involved with a lot of real positive things in O-Sage and reminded how long I've been around and that I was your husband's little... But anyway, it is really good to be here. I want to talk about the proposal we have to put forth. But one thing I've kind of learned in my law practice is sometimes you've got a question burning in your mind so hot you can't even listen. So, if anybody has anything that they want to know before I say anything, surely feel free to ask it and I'll try to answer it. Otherwise, I'm sure there'll be questions at the end. But at this point, I was asked to come and speak on behalf of an as-yet-unformed group that is interested in preserving this historic structure, which is probably the most historically significant building that remains in O-Sage and perhaps Mitchell County and don't want to see it lost to even modernization. And what this group has pledged to do is move this structure a distance away from the school and allow it to be relocated into a new position. And what the group would propose to do is provide the funding, guaranteed funding, to do this move. And what the group currently has in mind is we would ask the school to consider allowing this building to move to the two northeast lots on the Lincoln School ground as it's surveyed by the city. I believe these lots are rectangular running north to south. And so, the two lots would be the two most northeast lots that run north, either run north to south. And the building would propose to face east on those lots, basically as you see it now when they move to the northeast corner of the property. And the funding is secure for that relocation. Ultimately, it would be the goal of this group that this building would be restored as a community effort. One of the things that we have in the currently, I believe, pledge to the Education Foundation is the collection of Mike Johance from his personal time as Secretary of Agriculture from his time in Washington DC. When we were out there to see him some years ago before the completion of the CRC and the Regional Events Center, he pledged that collection to us and wanted to see it remain permanently in O-Sage. We've never been able to come up with a location for that. And this building, we think, would be a perfect location for that permanent collection, what we believe would be a permanent collection. We also have always wanted to have a permanent office space for the Ed Foundation someplace and we think this building would be an opportune place for that office to be. As far as remaining uses of the building, we think there are many uses for the building. You know, when we proposed the construction of the Regional Events Center on the fairgrounds there, we didn't know exactly what the purpose of that building would be, but we could envision a lot of uses of that building. And I think that building is reserved now, what, a year in advance or something for various purposes, the Regional Events Center. So, it certainly has found a lot of uses. And when we talked to the USDA people out there about our vision for that building, we certainly envisioned a lot of activity there, which we think would be the same with this building. And the building itself, we were pleased to learn, is structurally in very good shape. I believe there's not a great deal of concern about whether it's movable or not. One thing to remember about the building is it's not that big. It's, you know, 72 feet by 36 feet, although it is tall. I'm sure Gisselson's got a bigger building. He just plays with his toys in than this building is. So, anyway, it would fit nicely on those lots. We realize that there is a timeline for the removal of this building, which we would have to meet. And Mr. Kern is behind this project, as he has been on other projects. And he has said that he will make sure that this building is relocated and moved. And if it came that it was impossible to move the building and relocate it or the deadline had simply run, he would stand the cost of demolition of the building so the school would not have to bear that cost. I guess what I would envision, I'm not your legal advisors, what I would, I think, recommend if I were your legal advisors and if it was your intention to allow this project to move forward, that you retain ownership of this building and the land until it is relocated to your satisfaction, at which point you deed it to the new ownership group, whoever that was, so that you can retain control of this whole activity until it's completed and you're not stuck with a mess on your hands. So, I mean, that's the way I'd propose it. We're hoping that, you know, enable to save the school the cost of demolitions and maybe you'd be willing to swap the two lots that we think would sufficiently hold this building. We realize there's a ball diamond there. If we have to, we'll relocate and rebuild the ball diamond somewhere else because that would be a part of this also. So, that is the proposal. The timeline, I think, is tight. We would envision that this building would have a foundation, including a full basement, put under it, that is the current plan. Mr. Kern is behind, so that would have to be undertaken right away. And otherwise, we think the building is not being relocated that far. We don't have an actual proposal from a mover at this point about that timeframe, which is something we'd have to investigate and make sure that it could be done in that timeframe. Or if it was possible, if that was not possible, to get an extension of time to move the building because, you know, obviously, you know, it could be affected by weather or other things. There just isn't that much time involved in this. But that would be the plan as to how this would move forward and...
Well, can I just ask you right now, what kind of ballpark timeframe has been talked about?
Well, we're under the impression that this has to be moved by the end of July. It would have to be out of the way.
Yes, by the time school is underway. How about filling in the hole and that sort of thing? You're talking about that or basically what's going on?
Well, I don't know. It certainly wouldn't take very long to fill in the hole and prepare to move the building and getting it out of the way. It doesn't have a basement under it now.
Yes.
Of the hurdles that I foresee of the project, I wouldn't think getting that filled would be... Except that it, I don't know what your plans are. Are you planning a structure where that sits?
We're in the process of looking at why else, so...
Oh, yeah.
We're just going one step at a time.
Repurchase, studies, whatever.
Yep. Helen, did you have...
Well, I just wanted to clarify. I know you said about moving it. If that isn't an option, is it moving anywhere else an option at all? Is that, I didn't, wasn't understanding that properly. Is it only moving into that northeast corner?
Well, that is the proposal that I guess has been currently discussed. And, you know, I think that from a historical preservation standpoint, there are some restrictions on that.
If you guys would like to look at the map of where, what the building looks like, I don't know if I needed that to close in. Where your building is right here.
Honey, are you ready for questions or... I think at this point, if you will allow us, basically, I mean, we need you still, but, you know, so don't, just stay there if you would. But also with Robert's Rules of Orders, and I do want to do this exactly right. We need a, I would like a motion to discuss the seminary building in a second so that we can discuss it. Would someone like to make a motion to discuss the seminary building?
Make a motion to discuss the seminary building.
I'll second.
Second? Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so then we will be able to discuss the seminary building. And I think with Paul and Joyce being knowledgeable about this proposal, the board should start asking questions that they would have. So, go ahead.
I have, I'm going to start with a question. As far as, because it's an old historical building, have you guys looked into the environmental study of the, I mean, I know that just being with courthouse or whatever, that was quite an issue. That was quite a timeframe that was tied with the environmental study. The DNR got involved and come in and get all of that. Have you guys looked into any of that yet?
The folks that we talked with, we had Burglin and Cramm, an architectural firm came, and just the report from the Historical, National Registry of Historical Buildings, that's what we've looked at. But what type of issues were they?
Well, no, they have to come in and actually, I mean, it's a whole ordeal. It's a long ordeal. And I don't know the whole extent of what happened, but if, before you, I mean, any kind of whole building. And I don't, I'm just asking if you researched any of the environmental study.
They'll be brought in and that's, you know, and you would know that. That's, those are the questions that we would immediately go and research to find out.
And I know that's quite a delay. I mean, that was a delay, I know. And I know it was an extensive amount of time for the S.R.'s days. I'm not sure the timeframe, but it definitely would not, I mean, you know what I mean? Because we are in such a tight timeframe, I don't know that that could actually be. I know it was quite a delay.
And what were the issues? Do you remember what they were?
No, this is because they have to come in when there's asbestos. I mean, they have to come in before you even touch it.
Asbestos.
There is asbestos in there, but it's only a part of the floor.
But to even move a building, I think it's under the whole thing of moving or demolishing, whatever. And I don't know anything for facts. I'm just wondering about the environmental study. Have you guys have had any research or any knowledge on that yet?
So, you are posting these, these actual plot of, plot of lots. And what we would have faced, then, did you say?
Still facing east.
Still facing east.
So, it would slide forward and then to the north?
Just a little, the thing that we were trying to preserve was the view for the folks that kind of lived there. When you turn down Mechanic Street, it's kind of like going down Pennsylvania Avenue and you see the Capitol Building there. You know, when you turn down Mechanic Street, that's the building you see, but it would be 150 feet further this way, staying 25 feet away from the sidewalks.
Would you fence this?
Yes.
You would have...
Yep. Just thinking so for security for students and, you know...
Building, I hope maybe if we're just moving in a distance, if they said this is going to be done before you get an occupancy permit, that might be different than saying, "We just want to move it for the time being," you know?
I have no idea. I was just curious.
That's good to know. You know, you're the best.
I'm not sure, but you can certainly call up to the courthouse and they would inform you.
Oh, sure.
What they had to do. Because that was a historic building also, Mitchell County.
Do you have another question?
I've got confusion, I guess, because I understood you to say you're moving it east and north.
Slightly.
And I'm hearing you say it's simply straight east.
It would have to be kind of looked at because, I guess, that's, that would be my hope, would that you could still preserve the view for the public because they're so used to it. But if it needed to be moved north further than, but still facing east to plot out those two lots, if that's what is allotted, you know, I'm sure that's, that could be, you know, absolutely happen.
So, you're saying, I'm a resident on that.
I understand, yep.
So, I'm going to look right out at that. That's my living room view of where you're moving that. Is that what you're saying? So, that's the building that we will look out no longer, the playground, but we'll look out at that building?
The buildings, but it'll be still the same distance away from where you live. And then the ball diamond would probably be, could be, you know, depending on what the board decided, could be just maybe slightly to the west, you know, if that's where it could go, you know? We, it's just...
I would assume that if it would be moved as far as it could to the northeast.
Yes. Oh, as far as it could to the northeast, yes.
Without, you know, without being on the parking or whatever. Okay.
And just, so you know, the two of them, okay. The femigrant is meant to be, it will go out halfway to there and then that corner was meant to be a parking spot. So, if you're willing to give up your parking, you know, because in that other area would be a ball diamond. If you're willing to give those up...
That would be part of the compromise, I guess.
But again, it has to be as far as that corner because it's open to possible additions.
So, it would be needed over to, explain how that all works because it would still be on school property? No, they're asking.
They're asking for that land. They're watching in on that land.
They'd like to, you know, either purchase it, if you would want to sell it to this group, that they would be able to, you know, do, deed it to whoever, if it's the Ed Foundation or whoever, they would be able to make sure that it's with your blessing. I mean, it, you know, originally, that's when I talked with some of the individuals. If I could just, I could just read this too, that the small group of individuals, including Robert and Patricia Kern, would provide the funding to purchase the building. This group requests that the school district sell the building to them as is for, you know, historical purposes, for a minimum fee. This group also asks that the district consider selling approximately two city lots in the northeast corner of the school property to be the future site for the seminary building. When determining the fee for this property, please take into consideration that the district will save the expense of demolition and hauling the building away. The relocated building will rest on foundation with a full basement. Building will be moved with the least amount of stress, approximately 150 feet to the east. And if it needs to go to the north more, or if there's a parking lot there, you know, maybe that could, it could be strategically placed out, just hearing that question, I guess. And then, what we were thinking about is that this location would maintain a physical view that the historic building has been, that has been here for nearly 150 years. So, I guess that was the goal for whenever you're preserving something, you want it to be the same or not too much change. But moving on with that, this, this group will be putting together, determine the restoration and the furnishing and the operating costs. They then would provide the framework to fundraise through a capital campaign to restore, furnish the building, and endow the operations and maintenance for the building. Establish permanent ownership of the building and that's when we would work and say, "Is this okay if this goes in here?" And the purpose we set was the Mike Johance artifacts with maybe future distinguished collections going in there as well. And then to, the restoration of the building would take place and then we determine the primary uses of the seminary building. And understanding the timeline, we would move fast to try to get this, to get this building moved in the best, in the best way we could, you know? And then, like I said, if the plan is stalled or the deadline approaches and we can't get it done and it's not a working relationship, then he would, they would stand the demolition cost because he owned the building and he'd have to demolish it. They would have to demolish it.
And that, actually, that's not true. If he owns it, you have no leverage.
What happens in the agreement, unless it's predetermined?
And see, this is just a proposal from this group. So, you know, there's, I'm sure there's a lot of things that we would have to talk about.
Yeah, Joyce, if the view unfortunately would be...
Clear to the north, so only one lot or two?
I don't know about that. It depends on the size, but I think that would have to...
Yeah, two would be...
It would have to maximize.
So, they could, the building could fit on, but if it could stay facing east, there could still be a parking area there on one whole lot. It has to be on the south.
Actually, the south side is where the buildings and the new additions was. I don't know where the...
Do you want it closer to you?
I would say for our purposes now, because we just can't really say, you know, whatever.
Right, right. It really doesn't matter.
Would be as far to the northeast as it would fit.
Okay.
With still the parking and the fence and all that kind of thing. So, the view is probably not an option coming down Mechanic Street. But, you know, but, because we, you know, we have a playground there that's got a lot of kids. It's got a big field that gets kids, so...
Let me say that, who's signing to demolish?
Well, there is a group that's working together, but Mr. and Mrs. Kern will back it financially. And if you need a promissory note, they're willing to do that, but...
That's the name of the note.
Well, I think they would, yeah. We'd have to talk about that. They probably put the seminary group headed by, you know, yeah.
Well, you've given a purpose. You've given a funding. And we put you on a tight timeline and you have said that that would be your desirable objective to come to that. What does the board have to say if their decision came?
I guess, as far as demolition, if it was to happen or whatever, would you follow a similar timeline of what we actually have proposed? I don't think they would.
It's a completed demolition timeline of August 16th.
Okay.
Honestly, they would never get that done if they have to do research and raise money and that.
That's what was my question.
Well, the relocating, you don't have to, the relocating, the purchase of the land, if that's the case... Well, the relocating, you don't have to, the relocating, the purchase of the land, if that's the case, purchase of the building, that's all funded already, right now.
And I'm just saying the demolition...
The relocating in the, in the basement and the...
Right, in a year, that's correct.
What you're saying is, if this doesn't happen, the demolition has to take place on that timeline.
Correct.
Right. That would be a court decision.
And the truth is, if this fell apart for whatever reason, we under, I understand that demolition obviously isn't going to take place by on that timeline. But your objective is, would be to have the move done by August 16th.
So we would try to do, say that's your timeline. So when we approached contractors about that, we say, "This is the timeline. Can do it, if you can't, hopefully we find somebody that we think is competent to do it, and they can do it with that, that timeline."
Obviously, there would be a lot of, a lot of details, a lot of ownership issues that would have to be discussed about timeline of ownerships and things. And I don't know that I would be willing to hand it over to someone until it was completed.
I would.
I want, we want control of it, in case things do go south. We need to have control of that building and that property.
I think, I think it's all about good faith. You know that we're working hard to try to preserve this building. And obviously, there's a lot of folks that have the same feeling, and, you know, they, they just want to work together and, and try to make everybody's, we want it to be a win-win for everybody. And, you know, that's, I guess, the...
The building mover that I know has told me that you can't really pick these buildings up and then not take them and set them back down, that they're not meant to sit on that moving apparatus for any length of time, because the building wasn't meant to sit on, on that. And so this...
So it's to get the basement, the basement probably...
It has to be a choreographed event when these things go.
And set for, is it like 20, did you say something about 28 days? Sit for a certain amount of time before you can put a building like that on top. I mean, it's... It doesn't take very long. I'm sorry, Dave.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Mike, Mike, yeah, we'll talk later.
Yeah. Appreciate it. What is some of the, let's see.
I've just got thoughts in my head. We've got zoning, we've got heights, we've got setbacks. How does that fall? And I'm not knowledgeable on the height of this building or how that's going to fit. What's this property zoned at? Is the city going to let you move it? Is it grandfathered in where it's at? And if you go to move it, it has to meet new zoning required, or current zoning requirements. I don't know.
I actually visited with Fuzz, Jared Dunley, and he didn't mention anything about that. So maybe he would need to be asked again.
I don't know.
To just look into it, because if there is, then, you know, we either figure out how, how to change those, or if City Council would be the ones to ask about that, or, yeah.
A tall building is going to throw a shadow line on neighboring properties across the street. I mean, that's something... Something, some may not find objectionable, some might find objectionable. I don't know. But it's, it's going to change the shadow lines of a neighborhood.
I'm kind of excited about everything. Like you said, we've met our goals of a timeline and money and purpose.
Do you have any other questions from all...
I just have a recommendation too. You're dealing with the, the emergency response there to, you're moving into that corner. If that's where your main sirens are, so if you've got that issue taking time with it, you might have, that might be, that might be another ordinance there too. So you got the main whistles. We got the main whistles right in that corner.
The main whistles.
And I don't know how that extends into the property or what you're dealing with.
Oh, I see.
With the tall building blocking it, and then you're going to get the resistance or not the resistance.
Right, right.
You know, the, all of that.
So it would appear that we would, if the board wants to rescind the other motion and goes through with something on this order, that we would have to give some direction tonight as far as, you know, and maybe put a committee together, you know, a couple of people from this board, or from this group and legal counsel, and go further with it, if, if that's what we desire to do. But we're not there yet, so. Do you have any other questions you want to share?
No, I think, I think they've, when I talk to, the people I talk to, I told them the three things, you know, that we needed to have, in writing and concrete. Obviously, the timeline isn't concrete yet, because you can't get somebody in a few days to tell you they're going to move a building in three months or two months or whatever it is. But I think they've done what I told them, that they needed to do, to bring this to the board, to satisfy that.
And you know, if you think about the timeline, and if in best-laid plans it didn't happen, what would be the worst-case scenario? It gets delayed a year?
Up to a year, our project gets delayed a year.
Yeah. But probably, I think it's going to happen for a year anyways.
If it gets delayed a year, it has to be brought back up.
I agree.
What, Tracy? The motion's been made that demolition was going to occur, and now we got to go back and we're going to rescind it. If we happen to rescind it, we got to go back through all of the contracting and everything.
No contracts, no signs.
No, but all of the documents and getting all of our timelines back, really, it's great. It would probably move it a year and... We are pretty disturbed by the Lincoln Edition at this point.
I don't recall, Steve, what, what is the cost, estimated cost of demolition?
$150 to $200, if that's before, I mean, you were going to make some progress. My only concern, if I may, is if you want to move it, that's fine. But personally, I think these reasons are a little bit weak. It's not our job, it is Ed Foundation's job, we've had this discussion, to memorialize Senator Jones. The Ed Foundation, I'm not sure why they need an office. I would also be worried that, I don't want them to generate funds for that facility when their job is to help the school system. And you will lose a parking lot, if that was what you were going to do.
Yeah, I have a concern with the space we're losing too.
And again, that building has to go north. It cannot sit this way. We have to spend, we will have to spend time buying it to two different architects. But if you choose to do that, those things just have to happen. And I guess I would ask that group to, for reasons, I guess. I just don't think there's solid reasons. I mean, in five years, here's the other piece that kind of bothered me. In five years, everybody talks about it, but in five years, I got zero people asking me to move that building. So it's not a real strong priority on people's minds.
And I would have to say, and I'm going to cut you again, but the space, I don't think, it's not an overly big space of our school. We're losing two lots, that's, that's a big chunk. I mean, I live there, I see the activity on a daily basis. I mean, there's no extra really, I mean, space to move that over and then our addition on top of it. I just, I'm not seeing it, but I'm just, I'm also going to, as a taxpayer, living on that street. I mean, we have a great view to the city of Osage, and right now, you know, and now we got a big, we're going to have a big tall building right there. I don't know. And those precious little guys at that baseball field, it's utilized from April 1st to July 4th, nonstop, with those little T-ballers coming in. And to put the building on top of their, what they call, you know, their, their spot to play. I don't know, I, I don't see it. It's just pretty cramped in there right now, that building.
And you are ahead, so you're fighting to possibly...
And we have to get a parking lot in there yet?
Anyone else want to voice their opinion? I guess I'm the only one that maybe hasn't come right out and voiced my opinion. I'm just, I'm really happy to see that a group came forward with the items that we asked. I know that you have to work together, you have to compromise. That's, we've done that how many times at the CRC when things were looking really bleak? Everybody gives a look. And I think in this case, that's very doable. That's how I see it. And I think the building can be moved. I think, you know, there's some legalities we have to look at, and so a committee we have to have that works together in good faith. And I have to say, I was not thinking this a few weeks ago at all, because there had been no purpose. And even every, you know, Penny even said, when she came to our meetings early, you know, you have to have a purpose, you have to have a purpose. Well, I think this is a purpose for, it might not be what everybody thinks is a good purpose, but I think it's a viable purpose. And I'm very confident, especially being associated with the CRC, that Bob and Pat Kern, they say they're, you know, enforce something, they're going to fund it. And I, so I think that's taken care of. And as far as the timeline goes, I feel this group would do, work very hard to make it happen. And my thought is, if it didn't happen this summer, it could happen the next summer very easily, having that much planning time by that group. And we wouldn't be doing that. That would be that group making all the arrangements again. And I, I just think that's very doable. I don't think ground is going to be broken on any Lincoln Edition before a year from now. We're not, I mean, we haven't even put plans out, you know, the board hasn't even seen any plans. It's just going to committee, which is how you have to start things. I mean, that's, you don't start brainstorming as your big group. You really have somebody draw up the plans, and then we all look at them and, and see if this is the direction that we think this district should go. So I think that ideally, it would be nice to have it moved, and I hope that that can happen, if we go ahead with this. But I don't think it's a deal breaker if things stop for a little bit.
I don't think Mr. Kern would be comfortable with this cost of the school and the money in any way.
Right.
I just don't think that would be the way he looks at this project.
And I think, you know, when talking about the logistics and where to put it, I think that one of the only reasons why they, we talked about just moving it just 150 feet this way, because then that wouldn't change really the view of the... Yeah, it's there now, so it's in the view of everybody.
So you're going to take the tree down, the big tree that's in the middle of the playground? That, if you're moving it that way, that's where the tree's going to come down? It will take values and everything, now that's what we're going to look at?
Where's the tree?
The big tree in the playground?
There's a ball thing.
Well, there's a ball thing.
But to get that building even moved, that great big tree in the middle of the ball thing, or not in the middle of the playground, to even move it anywhere to the north is the big tree.
I think you go straight forward inside there.
I, you know, it would have to be looked at.
But moving it all the way to the north, would you want to live right next to, and that's your view, looking right out at that? That's what I'm going to see now. So I, I am on a personal level right now, but it is, it does factor into residents.
Hopefully, this is really a golden one, a lot of people are looking at it now, in terms of...
It's a wide-open view now, and now it'll be a big building.
There would be a building there.
You would want to live there, have a dog in there.
Well, you have to consider everything. Applying and the education of our students, and the growth of our district, it's all going to factor in. So, if anybody has any more discussion, we'll hear it, otherwise just see what the...
I'm just, I'm just thinking forward, forward, forward. As far as parking lot, we're losing the parking area. And it is, it is, I know the old adage, you know, tear down the buildings, build parking lots. But we have a really bad situation of parking. You know that too, around there. It's terrible. And someday, something really bad's going to happen with all those cars parked on all those streets by an elementary school. But there are homes across the street in a lot of places that, that could be possibly purchased. And a parking lot, the parking lot doesn't have to be on the campus. And then you'd have more room for playground, for ball diamond, whatever. I'm just trying to think of alternative things here. And I was looking at all these houses, there's got to be something there that you could purchase in what a parking lot. And we're saving 150,000, 200,000, raising the building, that'll go a ways towards doing something like that. Just, just thinking of that. I understand where Tracy's coming from. And if I was living across the street, it would be very troubling.
Any other comments?
I will say, I'd hope this was a vote tonight, to save the building off property. That would be an ultimate...
I agree.
I just, I don't see the two, two lots, yeah, that was the ultimate goal, to have it off the property, right? That's right.
Okay, so, if we have a choice, we do not make any motion, or make a motion to rescind the March 16th motion.
How do you do that if you don't want to?
No, no one makes a motion. And to understand this only, at least temporarily, rescinds our prior decision to raise the building. That could happen again at any point. And it doesn't mean that we've entered into an agreement with anybody at this point to do anything.
We, that's if we rescind the motion, then we probably want to make a plan down there.
To take a look at this thing further and see, see if it's, see if it's viable.
We would get it going.
We have to take into consideration that we will have a new board. We have, you know, I mean, that, we're on a whole lot of changes, we have other things that are going on, and we have whatever. But, I mean, you know, you'll know longer and, you know, whatever. So that will be also coming on, and is it more than, I don't know, also beyond...
Well, if the decision is made to go with their plan, it won't be a factor for the new board.
How could you say that?
I mean, because it would be moving along with what their plan says.
So you're saying that everything would be...
Well, they said they would raise, they would raise the building and take it and fulfill their plan. So what else would there be?
Well, this could be carried out for a whole year again.
Yeah, well, then they would still move the building.
So how could you say it wouldn't be for the new board, would we have to deed it right away and everything like that?
We would already agree to either that they move the building or they raise it. We're going to do either one.
But something else could be rescinded of down the road also, what she's saying.
I don't know why you would though, if she's got either roof or worn down. What else would you want?
To me, that would solve. I mean, if we get something going, we get it going.
Yeah, and I guess, I have another question, is the delay. I mean, this has been out there for a long time, the, the whole, all of a sudden, just interest in, you know, I mean, I guess, I don't know. I mean, is this, is this a future thing that has a lot of love for? I mean, because it's come, five weeks ago, we heard from people, where it's been out there for, how long, Steve? Yeah, a long time, and all of a sudden, it becomes an interest to people, so...
Well, I think it became advantageous, because it was going to be demolished. I think it's, you know, was what caused that ground swell of interest.
If there was no purpose with it last fall, nobody could bring a purpose to the school board, it's back last fall. And now all of a sudden, we have a purpose, when we've made a motion, we've discussed it, we've agreed to move on, and now all of a sudden, there's a purpose. We've asked for a purpose for many months.
We have a purpose now.
Just, I, I, I guess.
I move to rescind the decision of March 16th.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there discussion? All is in favor? Three people opposed?
Aye.
Aye to, motion passed, stage two. All right, then our next order of business, which I did not outline for our group, because I didn't know, and it's up to the directors at this... I didn't know, and it's up to the directors at this point to, because we want this group to keep going, and we have some things that we need to mail down. I may, I wonder if Rick and Herb would be our school board liaison, just two, we don't have a four, and then, you know, and meet with Joyce and Paul and whoever else is with their group.
I'm counting my mates, she has somebody on the, the cell, it's going to be, that's why we have that committee.
I would agree with that. I would be used, you were on it.
Right.
I voted no, so...
That's what I thought.
That's probably why you should be on it.
Okay, then I'll be on it. I can, I can accept the decision made by the board.
Who else would like to, Rick?
Let's hear it, Rick.
Is that okay?
I, you can't have three, because you're going to have to call the meeting every time.
Yeah. Will you?
It's fine.
Okay. So Rick and Doug will work with you, and we know we need some legal documents going, all to kind of help us out in that direction. And then you guys, I am going to ask you to report them at our April board meeting. And that is the third Monday night at 6:30 here in the high school. And so we can see where, because we know that you did a lot in a week, and now you've got a little bit more time, but you have to make your contacts and see what's happening and give us some guidance with your plan. So you're just saying they're going to be on the committee to meet? Yeah, these two meet with that, their group.
You say legal, so are, are legal counsel?
Nope. Get them to, we, we can examine something, but they, we just need somebody to start it. We're not quite into the... Then we would have legal counsel, absolutely, absolutely. But right now, where it's more of a brainstorming, and you guys have done a lot on that, or have, have it needed now.
No, no.
But we will. So you make your own arrangements to meet with these people? And let me know if you have any problems, and, and, are you together or be arranged? What do you think, Rick? No, no, tell us where you are. We need you to have gotten together, I can't predict, that we don't have a recipe for this, so. But in good faith, we'll see where you are with the plan, and hopefully, I'll work with you, they've done, we carries it further. So they will be our two school board representatives, and I won't say who will be on the other side with the proposal, the other part of it, because the main others, they need, and then, of course, we will bring in legal counsel to us at any certain point, so. Is there anything else for tonight? Okay, well, again, I thank all of you for coming, and we do meet the third Monday night, you're always welcome, we have a lot of visitors, so just interested, if one of you's joining, come on in. This meeting is adjourned.